Call the meeting order. Roll call.
You didn't say it.
By the way.
Car.
Was. Uh, since the previous meeting, there were actually two sets of meetings, because there was a special, September special meeting, so you'll have the October meeting and the special September meeting approved. I've got a motion to approve the minutes.
We made the motion that we approved the minutes of the October, where is it?
September special meeting.
Well, September special meeting.
September 19th, right? Is it the?
October's.
19th, yeah. And then the other one was October 1st.
October 1st.
Yeah.
I second the motion.
Motion made, seconded at the council discussion. All favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
We make the motion, we accept the claims.
Do you know what, look at him, no?
I do. I do. I'm doing my duty.
Here's your claim. Um, the Spring Street Auto Care ones in the B High, we had to update the lights and police vehicles. When we got those vehicles four years ago in 2020, we didn't have any money, so we bought cheap lights and put on them, and most of the LED bulbs have burned out, so we had to upgrade them. But they were also a different size, so we had to, and the tailgates, we had to seal the holes, and refinish the, I mean, true thing on the tailgates. So, that's been passed.
Awesome.
Yeah, I'm almost.
What are you doing there?
Yeah, I'm almost sweaty. And, I don't understand, but...
They were turned all the way, almost off, they were turned all the way off when I turned up a little less, and then about to turn it back down. That's why it's on.
So I guess, post office, post office.
So the claim that says safety lights, that was the PB, that is the light that you put on?
If it's under Spring Street Auto.
Oh, yeah, it just says.
No, safety lights, no, Eric actually bought some personal safety, what's the name of them, Eric?
Guardian Angels.
Guardian Angels. So you're not on the roadway or whatever, you turn it on, people see.
Smart.
See you. Uh, they're really pushing those for everybody to have, whether it be fire, ambulance, police, tow truck drivers, uh, it's been, Montana's been killing tow truck drivers, they're getting hit, one right after another, so it's, one of the things that kind of pushing.
And it's multi-use, it goes on the police bicycle.
Oh, yeah, it goes on the police bike, too.
Too bad you couldn't put them on the cows that were out by the road the other day when I came back from the dog walk.
That's a cow. I called those.
I did, too. They weren't dying anyway.
I wanted to bring some up, the Wex bill.
The what?
The Wex bills are fuel cars.
Okay.
The police department spent eighty-three dollars and six cents a month of October fuel. So the bike has made the town green. Normally, a couple of years ago, the fuel was running sixty-eight hundred a month.
And how much was the bike?
Twenty-one. Twenty-one ninety-nine. He's almost paid for just in a couple of months, if you compare the fuel.
I thought you were actually driving bikes, but when someone told me it was electric.
No, it's power assist.
Power assist, it's not electric. It's a power assist.
I have a hipper protected injury, and that assists me in pedaling throughout the town of Hot Springs.
Um, Laysure Lake sand and gravel, that was sand, uh, now they actually got a salt mixed in it for eighty-sixty.
Treasure State?
What's that for?
Was it Treasure State or no?
No, Laysure Lake, yeah.
You said salt, I think Treasure State had salt and sand.
Oh, yeah, they, uh, Laysure brought some more. And then, um, here in the next few weeks, I'm going to go full can and give you, uh, ten tons of just bulk of salt, straight salt, too. It works a little better down, like in front of businesses, in parking areas, the guys like using salt there, so you don't track the, the sand into the businesses, but that keeps some people getting out of cars and stuff, that's what works, we use that quite a bit, just in the parking areas on Main Street. And of course, if people cross on the street and all that, too, makes it a little...
So who are the fuel cars from Right Express, and what's that for?
Right Express?
Uh-huh.
Those are fuel cars, all vehicles.
Okay, all of them?
All of them, so, fire department.
But not the police, because you were talking?
Police, yeah.
Police is on there, too. If you look at the front of the Wex, I, maybe we can show you it, if you look at the front of the Wex bill, it's separated out into what departments it costs.
Okay.
But it's the fire department, the fire department ambulance, the police, um, public works, and then the works gets divided between water, sewer, and streets.
What are they paying?
Almost as bad as the, uh, AT&amp;T bill.
Yeah, Treasure State was oil. I'm going to guess.
What's the new sign? Fire wall. Oh, no, that's from the salt we have, anyway.
Thank you, Steph.
Thank you, Steph.
Thursday, with Laysure Lake. Yeah, Treasure State was oil, CRS, too. That was, uh, point seven-seven tons for seven thirty-nine twenty-five.
Where was the Gammel's one?
I don't see it either. Is it on?
It's on, uh, fine sheet.
Now, especially one of these guys that we do like this Spring Street.
Is it on here?
No, I haven't seen it, I don't know.
So there's not, if there's not a claim?
It should be on the red one, and it should be in there, because there was a check. Yeah, right, on the, yeah, because the Gammel's plate had that water on there, and then it had, which was twelve hundred dollars or something like that, and then it had the flag on there.
That's forty-five.
Present with the, present with the council.
Look, we could get this night of rage, I was going to ask you about that, you could remember, she goes in every night. I'm going to remind you right now.
Can you see this? You want to try it, right?
Well, Gammel's one, it's not, no, the Gammel's one, I haven't seen.
Gammel's, yeah.
We just always, very good.
Spring Street one.
Oh, yeah. The Gammel's one, we were waiting for.
Okay.
I think I held it up. I have to go.
I think I held it up.
I have to go. 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 Thanks for remembering that.
Thanks for reminding me, so I don't forget stuff.
I'm just going to have my page here.
Springer didn't work very well.
No, I didn't.
The cartridge came in, so I can switch it out, but it's on, if you need, I can reprint it, but it's on the other, it's the same information on the other page.
Yeah, the one that I can't read.
Oh. I can try to print it from here.
It's okay. It's okay. I'm just giving you a hard time.
An motion to accept the claims. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other council discussion? There are none, all favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next item is going to be your financial reports. This will be August and Septembers. Make the motion, we accept the financials. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Motion made, seconded. Any other council discussion? There are none, all favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The reports, um, the mayor's office, uh, back with subdivision stuff, um, finalizing that, did the final, uh, review of that with, uh, this is a public meeting, scheduled that, okay, if things lined out, um, so that's been part of it, uh, public annual financial report, and all the pictures that you'll see later, and then of course, working on a new police officer. So, we've had a busy month of interviews, and, you know, a lot of home time and stuff, people on these projects, so, the floor stuff's all done, that's all moving forward, we've got all the final contracts and stuff signed on that, some of the floor stuff, they get all that ordered, it's already coming, and it's probably the next spring when we get to see it, it'll come, be more, uh, work on that. All that works, just getting ready for winter, um, we saw we had salt and sand and all that stuff come in, get all that stuff ready, it's already winterized, and cleaning up around, um, just getting ready for that.
Sanders are on trucks?
What?
Sanders are on trucks.
Yeah, Sander, there he's all ready to go, um, so, they're ready to go whenever it snows. Fire department, um, last month was twelve of this, we had, uh, multiple crashes, we responded to a crash in our district founder on Highway two hundred, a mile marker eighty-nine, and then, then we had to respond to mile marker forty-two on twenty-eight, there's a bit forty-six miles between the two places, so, our district's just big, um, this month is the start of house fires, we had two this week, so...
Wow.
So, we're into the house fire season, normally have two a year, we had two this week, so...
Do you know what they're cost, though?
Uh, chimneys, woodstoves are always great for burning out people, there's, if you, if you wanted to, uh, get a new house, put in a wood stove, uh, one of those electric, just an electric one, short, uh, cut some wood on fire, so, both of, both of the houses are bad, neither one, just a smell, a little, so, that was good, so, but that's, we're into that, time of year for that stuff, too, so. Um, police department, uh, we said we had, uh, we had that out there for hire, um, we ended up offering a job to, uh, full-time position, we offered a job to...
John Radisson. John Radisson.
John Radisson.
Radisson.
He, uh, actually flew up here from Southern California and interviewed, he's worked in the, uh, north, he's worked as a police officer in North Dakota, and some Midwest, some places in the Midwest. He, uh, is going to try something different, we're going to try a little older gentleman, middle-aged.
What's wrong with that? That is not, if not, you're not tired.
Instead of the young ones, we're going to, we're going to move up and try a little older guy.
Some little maturity, hey!
Well, we'll see how this goes, we'll, we'll try this, so, he's on his way, uh, he'll probably be here, being this week, next week?
Just the housing challenge one?
Yeah, I think, we got that, we got that handled, I think, we're just waiting on some people to change into stuff on the house, and we can get a new house, but that's, so he's on his way coming, and he's on his way to try a little, so...
So is he certified then, or?
He is not, Montana, post-certified, so he's a millennial Montana candidate.
Does he have to go through the whole academy?
Does he have to do the whole thing, or is there some kind of transfer thing?
He will have to do the whole, wow.
What's that?
He will have to do the entire, four weeks.
I assume that they wouldn't have some type of transferable, if you'd already been a police officer somewhere else?
They do, if you are post-certified somewhere else.
Oh.
The other places he worked as a police officer, you got to have a post-certified.
Gotcha, okay. Now we know what you have to do.
Um, during the interview process, though, we did interview another candidate, uh, out of Azula, who is post-certified in the state of Montana, and was looking for some part-time work, which ideally, the town would have two and a half officers as our ideal staffing, that way we have someone in town seven days a week, um, so with that, um, I also hired Sean.
Visantee.
Visantee. His last name, but, but anyway, so, so, Sean, as, as is post-certified in the state of Montana, has worked for Monroe County and some other places around, um, and he is just looking for part-time work, so, uh, so he's been coming up one day a week, uh, the last few weeks, uh, maybe one, two days, just depends on how the schedules fall, but, um, so, was it two officers we have, um, and I'll turn over Eric to give his police report.
Thank you. Busy, busy time, uh, of, of, a lot of pride, actually, for myself, is the, uh, inner working relationships of Hot Springs has started to build, uh, the assistant Holson PD, the highway patrol CPS, probation parole, sheriff's office is our constant, uh, but the one that I like the best is my, the relationships with EMS and fire. So what I wanted to do when I came here is to run calls with them, to see how they work, to, to learn how they manage scenes, so that the police department can assist, so that we can train, because those who fail to train, train to fail, so if you don't preload the training and be prepared to work together, when something major happens, and a catastrophe occurs, um, if you're trying to figure out what to do in the heat of the moment, you're too late to really make a difference. So, I went on a couple of calls with them, and, um, I think I said, when I first started, just the amount of respect I have for the volunteerism is really hard to, um, to really evaluate and equate on how important and lucky we are to have the dedicated people who show up day in and day out, and these calls are, you know, never ending, I hear the buses start, I hear the calls going out, and I hear the, the vehicles running, so, um, I just wanted to be part of that process, and so we did that crash, you spoke of, we were up on permit, we worked that one, that was a major crash, two cars, a bunch of people hurt, Jim Reynolds, and then another one way up on twenty-eight, where a guy smoked a deer or something, but he was shook up. When the people see that we take our job serious and we're professional about it, they're going to tell a whole bunch of people how Hot Springs operates, and, uh, so I just wanted to further that relationship along. School functions, the schools asked that we, um, go and talk to the outgoing seniors on the importance of social media, bullying, things like that, so, my new officer and I are in together a presentation for the school, um, it was very beneficial, when I was in high school, and the police came and talked on, we didn't have social media, which is the devil for kids, in my humble opinion, and the things that are said and done on social media that will follow them their entire life, and how that can be dangerous, you know, to their future, so I just wanted to give real-life examples, to hope that they would, uh... Trunk or treat, huge success, uh, gave out, I don't know, a hundred and twenty safety bags, an option, other than, uh, candles, coloring books, and, and fun games and things, and it was a safety bag, it was reflectorized, and, uh, you know, it went off great, a lot of positive things, so, a couple stolen cars, just typical town businesses, never ending, you know, common denominator, oftentimes. Any questions from the staggering crowd at the party, Ron?
No, I don't have any. No, it's been, it's been, like, like you said, he's been working well with the police and has the fire and the ambulance and the school, is, uh, they're asking to do stuff on fire all the time, so it's really been...
I did see that wreck that was down on two hundred, that did look awful.
Yeah, so, it's been, it's been good, and any, um, purpose, too, is just getting all those to work together as one, so there is something bigger that happens, and everyone knows what's going on, and all that, so, um, we'll skip clerk, she's busy, which most of it is, uh, some fiscally irritating stuff here that we're going to talk about later, um, also our audit is past due, and I did talk to the auditor again today, and I emphasized very strongly that it has to be done by the end of the month, and she assured me it would be, we'll see. The only trouble with government audits is there's only a few auditors in the state of Montana licensed to do it, and, uh, they know that, so she's been very reasonable with us, the other auditor, who's a devil of a mind, you know, she's trying this.
Is this Magda?
No, Magda's, our, our audits are done by Nicole Women, out of Saint, Saint Regis.
Saint Regis, I knew that in the county, okay.
So, and then, uh, there's an auditor out of Calistella that does them, Guinea and Downey, um, when I was first mayor, they came in, we're doing our audits, and they found a bunch of mistakes, and changed a bunch of stuff, and charged us for changing it all, uh, and then, two years later, when they did our next audit, they said that that stuff was all done wrong, and they charged us to change it again, and I go, I go, no, I'm paying for that, we got into a big heated argument, I'm like, never hire him again, I mean, you're the one that did it, here's the paper, I showed him the, the stuff, and his people did it, and, and you want to charge us a few thousand dollars to fix it, I'm like, no, that's, so, so I, she's, so we'll keep on her, I'm going to keep calling her once a week here, until we get it done, she says she's really close to almost doing it, so... Uh, library? No one on there from the library? So the library, you have your library report in front of you, also with this library report, um, they also are giving you the, uh, state of the library address, uh, which they're supposed to do, so I'll go through and talk about how who they hire, uh, what they get for the year, uh, you know, buildings, all that, and then she has the spreadsheets in there with, uh, statistics on people, uh, also has in there the, uh, the monies, and a bunch of appropriations, expenses, electricity, and that type of stuff, so...
I think it is impressive when you have the people, if you set a little library up.
Yeah. It's, uh, used for multiple different angles, it's still those places that, uh, people can go and get information, or, or to share information, even, you know, so, and little groups that get people together, um, that's always nice when you have a, gives a lot of those people that are kind of otherwise shut in, a reason to get out and go somewhere for an afternoon or something.
And if you can't afford the internet, you can just sit in the parking lot, part of the building, and you...
Yeah, I know, I'll, I'll, I live down there, and the way the sound went, it always sounded like you're way outside of the building, even though they're clear around in front of the library, it was...
Well, I know, when I first moved here, before I could get mine hooked up, that's what I do in the evening, I go sit in front of the library in my car.
Yeah, so, they're, do a very good job. We skipped over clerk, did you have anything that you're not going to talk about later? Uh, zoning compliance, um, we haven't had anything this month in town, except for the ongoing with the, uh, with the subdivision, um, so what we've done is their engineers have figured, finalized it, our engineers have reviewed it, um, and come up with some recommendations from the town, compliment some points, most of it is just housekeeping, it's just paperwork-type stuff, you file this, or put this, um, on most of it, so it looks pretty good, a lot of the public meeting, we'll go over all that at the public meeting, but doesn't really jump out at anything, um, with that, they'd like to get, of course, if you want, this is possible, so, um, a lot of, they have to do a few more little loops, but a lot of public meetings, that's second meeting, December, I think, Thursday, the second weekend in December, their public meeting on the subdivision, and what they're doing, and, and finalizing, final piece, so, finally, they haven't changed anything else, and we're staying with September. Parks and Recreation?
Well, we had another little fundraiser.
Well, we had another little fundraiser, uh, up in September, I was moving the park, had pretty good turnout, even though the weather was a little chilly, most people bundled up, and it was a nice success. We raised about $900, and by doing it again, it's tough to pull off, because it has to be in the fall where it gets darker late, so be able to project it or, you know, start it at 10, which is way too late, so. We plan on having more, and probably some fountains in the park, but also this summer to keep raising money. I have contacted a few of the splash pad people that do design and engineering for free, so throw my name perhaps, we want some free stops, so we'll see what happens.
I have another name to throw away, yeah. Called Mike Dawson.
Mike Dawson.
Try to, yeah.
I was under the impression that they only want the best money on tribal property and not city property.
I would always visit with him just for a minute. He has a couple things. One, he has some people that would like to put a skate park in Evertown, and I told him I wasn't too big on the whole bowls and the concrete thing, because what happens three, four years down the road, it's all broke up, who's paying to repair that? But also just the cleaning of it, I mean, just like this time of year, you've got to be cleaning it all the time, the leaves and all that stuff, so nothing for the Public Works Department, noise of you there cleaning. One of the things, when we looked at this 15 years ago, is we looked at doing more of an urban skate park, and one of the ideas was connecting the park down to the school or something like that, 12-foot wide, 10-foot wide, 12-foot wide, concrete pathway, we put in the rails, the picnic tables, the steps, the fire hydrants, the different features that some of the kids use, you know, since the bowls and all that. So he's looking into that, but on that piece, he said that would like to be on tribal ground, but also maybe they tried leases on that ground from the town, or there might be a way around, so. So it'd be worth it. And he did, another one he had, he said they've been, he thinks is coming, is playground program. The playground.
That is a foundation over on the other side that's working with communities on the reservation, by their family, to put playgrounds in the parks, to get people to exercise, get out, get to the park, do stuff. So we, we are in contact with those people, and we sent them a letter of interest, and given them our footprint, and what we had out there, and waiting to hear back from them, sure.
You contacted the Lower Flathead Valley Foundation?
No, it's called Push and Play.
Yeah, I know, but their whole focus is on kids, and they do small $3,000 grants, $5,000 grants, they're pretty easy to get. And this Friday, every three months, you can submit one, and this Friday, the 15th, is one he wants to do. I look into it because they're really easy.
What's the?
Lower Flathead Valley Community Foundation.
Community Foundation.
Yeah. And they're pretty easy grants to get, they're not a lot of work. I don't know how they, because I know they go for, well, no, because they do like the mission libraries, all the libraries, the food banks get money from them, so, yeah, I'd contact them.
Okay. All right, we'll be on to new business. Fiscal year 2024 annual financial report, adjusting entries, so.
Excuse me.
Amy will explain why we're doing this.
Yes, I will.
Did you already alert us that we were going to be doing this?
Yes, for the last few meetings. I did. So the adjusting entries, when you look at these, when I get the tax reports from the county, sometimes the, it's unclear or it's outstanding where the money's supposed to go. When I put that into our system, I have to say three cents goes to mobile home taxes, library 2019, for every single dime or penny that comes through. Every once in a while, something is coded wrong, or they change something, and I don't catch it. At the end of the year, we go back, we take the overall county reports, we match them to ours, and we make the adjusting entries to make sure that ours are matched with the county's scent. So that's what those are, and for every one change you make, you have at least two entries, so that's why it looks like so much. Magda's very proud of me, she likes to work with me, because I only had seven pages, she's got some that are 16 or 30 pages of adjusting entries, so there's that. Another one of the, that's what number one is all about, it's all about where the taxes are coded when I put them in the system.
As you see, some of those are actually one cent.
Not in, or almost 200,000. We didn't get that sheet.
The sheet?
I found it. I gave them to, in last, when we got them back last week.
Well, yeah, I got everything, but I didn't get that one.
She got the big one.
I dropped the big one.
Here, I can have my.
Oh, good.
You can have one. Just to draw a read.
The other one you see on there, if you see any of them that say OPEB, say what? OPEB? They're going to be.
I have some page three.
I see a lot of weed.
Page three, about halfway down, you open.
Okay, so we'll just go page one and two is all the tax stuff. Page three, where it has the number two upside right here, yeah. So that one is something that was coded to water, that needed to be coded to sewer, and actually, this one, this took us forever to figure out what was going on in our system for this one, because it's an automatic, it posts automatically at utility billing to a county, and it's different in accounting than it is in utility billing. And the Black Mountain is trying to figure out what it's actually doing, but this is the fixes to put it back in water, where, so that it balances. So sewer was $23.99 over, or $23.39 over, and water was under that much, so they just had to be, and it was one of the automatic posting that comes, all the stuff that goes on in the background of those computers, I don't know. Section number three, salaries, wages, and pensions, this one, everybody has this one in there, adjusting entries, this is stuff that we don't actually pay. When you see, and four, same thing, when you see that OPEB liability, we have to claim that as an expense every year, but we don't actually have to pay it. It's, has something to do with social security and.
It's the state's PERS.
Yeah.
So, so that was one of the things that the state was claiming they were in their head, they had put all this money, but they hadn't funded PERS, and that's one of the things, since it's there, you have to pay it out, you have to show the funding for that. So those numbers have to go into the GASB accounting system to show that, you don't pay it, it doesn't mean nothing to a point, but it's going to all have to be.
But it has to be there, so you'll see that one every single year, there's nothing we can do to pull that one out of there, and that goes all the way through four. When you get to number five, in the beginning of the year, I did a tax, a statement from where our homes are through development. I don't get that statement until like January, but I have to start making the payments in July. So I don't know what part of its interest and what part of it is principal until we get towards the end of the year, and instead of going in and changing every single month all the way up to January or February, we just do the adjusting entry at the end of the year, so that it changes what was principal. Mine, all goes in as, the payment was $670, this goes in and separates it that $584 that was principal, $480 that was interest. So that's what that one is. And GFA has to do with stuff that has a monetary value, but like a depreciation, it technically has to be put in every year as an expense, or as an asset, every year has to be put in as an asset or an expense. So that's what this whole next section is, it's our depreciations and depreciation expense on machinery, equipment, property, all of that. And then towards the bottom of that page, the construction in progress, the amount that's been paid and the amount that's yet to be paid has to be included as either an expense or a asset, because it's done. We did $37,000 worth of the project, so that becomes an asset now, because we've done the expense, it's now an asset, so it has to be coded that way in the system. Number seven, this one gets me every year, I think we get a grant from DNRC, which is the state of Montana, but it's actually federal funds, and that one's just, I simply quoted it as a state grant, and it was technically federal funds, so I missed that one, and that's our, our fire capacity grant that we got last year. Local government review, that was, we get the check for the taxes in July, for human taxes, that was just the leftover that didn't get transferred, that should have been in that fiscal year, and that one's an every-year thing for that one. And that's why we had to have the second meeting on the budget, because once we created this entry, then it made us over again, and then even though we had already corrected it. Customer deposits and operating cash, those are, we have to pay a $200 water deposit, it's what gets left over and then gets paid out, and again, that was just something that crossed over between June and July. It happened in June, it was posted in July, because we do our posting at the end of the month, so that JV doesn't get posted till the next month. And ARBA is revenues collected in advance and transfers in. So we collected that money a couple of years ago, it sits there in revenues collected in advance, and now, or as it transfers in, and now it gets used as revenues that were collected in advance, it's not actually revenue anymore, it's, it was collected in advance.
What does ARBA stand for?
ARBA was the COVID money.
Okay.
American Rescue Act.
Okay, yeah. And Rob's not muted, so we can hear what's going on in his house. There we go. And water and sewer, those are just adjusting entries, moving them so that the overpayment account and the cash account, taking money out of one line item and water, putting it in a usable line item and water, so, and the same thing for the sewer, that's what 11 and 12 both are. To adjust receivable and overpayments, any balance to agree with utility billing accounts receivable summary list. And then the fire relief, to adjust a negative balance due to the fire relief, and that was, I'm not really sure how that money was even created in there, I think it was another one that crossed over the June-July thing, because we pay out, our fire relief guys get a check in the end of June, so we did, we usually transfer whatever's left in that account into the fire relief account, and then pay those checks out at the end of June. They give them every three months. Their retirement is $60 a month.
Right. It's, Randy just can't wait till he gets.
He'll be 55, don't wait, that's in just a few weeks.
Yes, but then you have to retire, then you have to stay all.
Young punk, young babe.
Yeah, yeah, you're 50. Okay, any questions on the adjusting entries report?
Did Magda put some notes under each one, too, so you can read her notes, too?
Motion to approve the adjusting entries.
I'll make a motion to approve the adjusted entries.
Second. Any council discussion? All favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Next item on new business is to approve the annual financial report. Now, we've made the adjusting entries, it's up to date now, motion to approve the annual financial report.
Is that that big, sick thing we got last time?
I make a motion to approve the annual financial report.
Second.
Motion's made second, any council discussion? All favor. Aye, we can speak quickly. The only thing we changed in it is from the way we looked at it last time, is we had to do these entries, so that's the only thing we changed.
Actually, Magda did the AFR, so she has a way to pull our thing up into the cloud, and she can make all these changes in it without it actually affecting my system, so this, on her end, those entries have already been made, so this is the actual financial report after those entries are made.
Okay. The one that we got last month.
That one was the same.
I have not made the entries yet, she did it in the cloud on her system, and printed off what the annual financial report will be after I do the adjusting entries.
Okay. Any other discussion? All favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Update on subdivision review and set date for public hearing. So as I stated, it is our engineering firm, Morrison Merrily, the, our, Morrison Merrily is subdivision guru and Bozeman, has reviewed it all, has made some changes, I didn't bring my laptop to the block, but Morrison Merrily except for his housekeeping type stuff.
There's a couple of variances that you can see.
There's going to be some variations.
I can send it out to you guys if you want to see it.
Yeah, I'd like to get the full thing.
Yeah, yes, and I'll send it out to.
All 6,000 pages?
Yeah.
You already have, we gave it to you earlier.
Yeah, that hasn't changed. All I have is the report.
Okay.
That's the change, yeah.
So the report will tell what they found in the final.
Okay.
Because they did some easement stuff and some of that, so this, this report, it'll give, and explains quite well, he did each one of them, explained why he thought, and then what the town should do.
Okay. And they will be here to either Zoom or be here to explain what that all is.
So, yeah, CR will be here in person, and.
Marty will be.
Marty will be here, I assume, presumably, so that's what, here in the public.
They're the guys that ventured before, will be.
Yeah, CR comes all the time, and that's our engineers who are overseeing or checking the engineers for floor to six, so.
One of the examples is some, our offices do not allow the lots to be.
Not state.
Well, the state doesn't allow the lots to be wider than they are long.
No, there is. Your, your lot can be no longer than three times the width.
Oh.
So some of these lots where they sit are actually just a little longer because of how they, because of the ditch. So it's things like that, it's, it's not really, they're not asking for, you know, big-time stuff. They're asking, instead of 50-foot wide easement, they're asking for a 40-foot easement and 100 feet. When the Calp Jake's Road, that access for the alley piece, it's, that's only 40 feet, state recommends 50, so they're asking for a variance on that 100, I think it's 100 feet.
That's the, that's the kind of thing, so there's nine of them.
So that's the type of stuff they're asking.
Okay.
None of us, as I said, none of us, you know, anything drastic. Drastic. There's a few other things, just how they are, how they have some things.
The parks thing and.
Yeah, the park thing, a few things like that. So, just a few things like that. The other one is the irrigation canal, Marty recommended that we have some language in there, or somehow put a tie to it, so anyone that has property that the irrigation canal knows that irrigation canal is owned by the project.
That they can't use.
They can't use, but also they have access.
There's an access easement on all properties adjacent to that irrigation canal.
So then you were just worried that, we just want to make sure anyone that has bought this property knows that the irrigation project can come through the excavator and clean the ditch and work on the ditch and all that.
Right.
And you just want to make sure that, kind of just make sure the town doesn't ever get blindsided 20 years down the road or something, so, so some stuff like that is what's in there, so. So that, so I would like to set the meeting for Thursday, the second week in December, whatever date that is. I have a call, I can look it up.
Tony, can you do a way faster than me?
The 19th?
No.
The second Thursday in December?
12, 12. It's my birthday, so, so you guys will bring cake?
The second?
Well, no, actually, you can't bring cake, because I don't even have one.
Damn.
But maybe bring your drinks afterwards.
I got you, I'll just bring a booze cake.
There you go.
What time, Randy?
Seven?
Seven.
Do you want to do it? It's going to be, it might be long, I don't know. Do you want to do it, it's going to be, it might be long, I don't know if it's going to be well intended or if it's going to be long.
Yeah, I'd say six, because people are concerned about it or interested in.
Six.
Yeah.
Six o'clock on December twelfth.
That way you get out of here and get to the surprise party.
Yeah, get to the party.
Last time I tried to do a surprise, you're all upset.
So, yeah, so it'll be, that'll be, that'll be good. Kind of get this behind us, it's been a long time, and the town has put.
I'm tired of it.
A lot of time and energy, and it just, it's been. It was supposed to be something really simple, and it didn't end up that well.
Oh, yeah, I remember being here last summer, they'd say it would be approved within a couple of months, and I was like.
Well, and actually talking to our engineer, Marty, who does subdivisions all day long at Bozeman area. He said, actually, this subdivision for them, his office that does them all the time, was a quick, easy one. They could have done it quickly and easily. It's just the engineering firm that they hired just did it. Just, they're learning, and it's just, so. That's why they really need to get a guy that does it all the time, or a guy that's never done one, or only done one, or, you know, something. Next item is change the date for the December Town Council meeting. I'd like to move that to Tuesday, second Tuesday of December. So that would be December tenth.
Or you guys can have it anyways.
Well, isn't that why we're supposed to have a council president, so that we have meetings if you're.
I'm also gone, though, so.
You'd have to find a second period.
Yeah. Did you guys?
Someone else make a motion to do that.
Oh. I make a motion to change the date for December Town Council meeting to Tuesday, December tenth.
Do I have a second?
I'll second tomorrow.
All favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Next item, amendment to amendment number two to the standard agreement between client and Morrison Merrily Incorporated. So we have an agreement here, it's a modification for on-call consultant, on-call services. A four for the additional services or modifications to services set forth above. Client shall pay consultant the following additional modified compensation. This amendment adds eight thousand one hundred dollars to the current project cap of twenty thousand two hundred, resulting in a total contract number twenty-eight thousand three hundred. And this is on the subdivision. So that ran out of the, what they thought they could get it done for. Add eight thousand dollars to it, that kind of finishes up what they did, and that also includes the Town Council meeting, and that also includes their estimate on anything else after the meeting. So there's going to be public comment, and some review, and some changes. That money includes that. Now, that money all, our, um, fee to the subdivision is this money, so. So our subdivision fee is all costs incurred by the town, so this is what it is. We will have to pay it, and then wait to be reimbursed.
And then the subdivision pays.
Okay, I make an amendment, a motion to accept the amendment number two to standard agreement between client and Morrison Merrily Incorporated.
That's okay.
Motion made second, any discussion? All favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. I want to go to executive session, but do I have?
I don't know where they went. But you can do public comment first.
Is there any public comment on non-agenda items?
Go east, go east. Nothing?
I didn't pay.
I got nothing for y'all.
Can I pay online my water bill yet?
Yes.
Yes. Is it on my water bill, where did it go?
Yes. Oh, I need to look better.
Pay attention.
Yeah, I think you have to set something up the first time.
So if you look under water bill, you're going to find this, it's a web ID.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Okay, so just go to our town website, and then go to utilities and everything else. And just follow their stuff. They're going to have you verify your email, once your email is verified, you'll have full access to basically August four of all of your account billing. It's updated in real time, you have all the controls, you can change dates, everything else. I recommend A C H over debit or credit, it's a little bit less of a fee. And you can set it up for email, text, or you can still come in, pay, cash your check.
Like someone who's doing slip it in, with their dog.
Yep. That works, too. We love it.
It was a little worrying, reminded, it was kind of full, and I was afraid my check wasn't going to go down.
Yeah, there was a holiday that I wasn't anticipating.
There was Republic Services sending me a cease and desist letter, I should have emailed, for not paying my coverage bill since August. So I go back and look, and I wrote an August check, a little September check. Actually, I paid in October, I doubled it because of, oh, I didn't look back, I forgot, so I actually paid them four months' worth, and they still, it's, don't know where they're at or nothing. I would have had to pay it online, just to get caught up, to figure out what's going on with it, but. And it comes with a little self-aggressive envelope and everything, and just send it back, so.
I do all that stuff online. Unless they charge me.
Call them radio?
No.
They're not a part of what's going on with the deputies.
So where are they at with?
That's what I'm saying.
And they're not answering the phone?
The phone's on the desk.
We'll take a five minute recess.
You're outside, police shit, I don't want to shut the door.
Oh, yeah, a little hot in here.
Yeah, they're on the pickup, trying to pull up. Should be two pickups out there.
They're not there?
I said, that's the little cells on the desk?
Yeah. No, no. Well, why were you in the break? I like the one that's extra barbed on top of his ability, but she's like sixty-one.
So my question is, all we have left is executive session, we've done public hearing and everything else. He's not going to be able to record during it, or even be here during the executive session, so.
We can go ahead and.
Close the meeting?
Public meeting, so Stephen, we're kicking you out.
Okay.
And I'm going to keep my Zoom people.
Yep.
Shanna and.
Since we did, since we did it public, and as Amy said, we've asked for public comment, we've received none. The only thing left is executive session, when we come out of executive session, we're just going to adjourn, so. Go ahead and close all that out.
Recording stopped.